Okay, we have the time at 7:00 PM. We're gonna call the meeting to order.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, if you'll stand with me for the pledge of allegiance, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Easton, we call the roll, please.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Mr. Raymert.
Here.
Mrs. Reed.
Here.
And Mr. Stubbs.
Here.
All were present.
Alright, thank you for joining us for our regular monthly meeting of the Board of Trustees. Uh, I will open it up for any visitor comments. Please state your name and address if you'd like to address the board, and you have a maximum of five minutes, please. Is there anyone on the line that has any comments this evening?
I'll go ahead with just a few things, gentlemen and ladies. Mark Cross, 7444 South Divers Road, Germantown, Ohio. Can you hear me?
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Cross.
Okay. So, Mrs. Reed, is there any update on the opening at the Senior Citizen Oversight Committee?
Well, the um, the charter or the agreement between the city and the township, excuse me, is still being looked at or worked on, and then from there, we only meet quarterly. I'm not sure if you're aware of that. And so, from there then, Mrs. Bonnie Kugel and I have to discuss it at the next meeting because we have, you know, we can't discuss it not in a meeting. And our next meeting should be in April. That date has not been exactly hammered out yet. Um, but we won't meet again until April to even discuss the changes to the charter or not changing it or for what. So, as of right now, it is still the same. Um, I mean, there's no changes or updates because nothing can be decided on until we have a meeting.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Raymert, will public comments be allowed at tomorrow's JED meeting?
Uh, yes.
Okay, good, thank you. So, also, I just want to make a shout out to Abigail Dennis put a Facebook post on yesterday explaining ways to stay in touch with the, uh, what is going on in Germantown Township, including using emails, YouTube, Facebook, and the website. And it's actually very informative if you get a chance to check that out. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, we're gonna pass it over to the fiscal officer for his report. Mr. Easton?
Good evening again, everyone. I don't have a great deal for tonight, so we'll move through things quickly. Uh, first of all, you have the minutes for two meetings. We have the January 6th special meeting, uh, which was the, um, the JED meeting, and we have the February 8th regular meeting. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, could I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the two meeting minutes.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion of the motion? And I, I assume the motion, Mr. Raymert, is to approve them as presented?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good, thank you very much. Excuse me. Uh, you have in front of you the February financial reports, you have the fund status report as of the end of February, the year-to-date cash summary by fund report for two months, you have the February receipts and the February payment listing. I wanted to point out in the receipt, that receipt number 16 is the $11,220.20 real estate assessment fee refund. This came from the Montgomery County Auditor, and I discussed this in detail at the February meeting. Are there any questions about the financial reports? Hearing none, could I have a motion to approve the February financial reports? And also authorize the payment of the February bills, which include warrants 50393 through 50428 and vouchers 69 and 150, and that's for payroll deposit, payroll tax withholdings, and other electronic payments.
Still moved.
Is there a second? Thank you. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye, sorry.
Alright, the motion passes. Following the Parks Board meeting earlier this month on March 3rd, I was contacted by Germantown City Manager Judy Gillian to try to schedule a meeting with the Parks Board, the Germantown Finance Director Pat Shively, Mr. Raymert, you're also, were invited, and myself. And that meeting has now been set to happen on the evening of March 29th, and that will be an official Parks Board meeting. Judy has asked that Pat Shively and I calculate the amount that will be generated by a half mil renewal, a half mil replacement, and a one mil new levy. Uh, not having ever done this before, I reached out to Pat Shively for assistance, and she has told me that she will do those calculations, and then we will review them together. There's, I, obviously, nothing that we can do tonight since we still don't have that recommendation from the Parks Board. But once they do make their recommendation on what kind of levy they would like us to run in November, and you are ready to move forward, the first step is for us to request the county auditor certify the funds to be received by the proposed levy. And in order to do so, you will pass a resolution. I did include the language of that resolution in my report. I will not read that tonight because I will read it the night that you actually pass the resolution. Uh, so then, we will then, with that in place, I will then request the county auditor to certify those funds. When that certification has been received by the auditor, in a subsequent meeting then, you will pass an additional resolution to place the levy on the November ballot. On February 16th, I submitted the township's 2020 annual financial report to the auditor state. The financial report is available to be examined by the public in my office by calling for an appointment. In addition, the 2020 financial report is also available online at Once on the auditor's website, you should choose Townships from the drop-down screen, and then click on the regulatory link. An Excel spreadsheet will open, and you will scroll down to find Germantown Township, Montgomery County, which is online 325. I've also authorized the 2020 transactions to be posted on the Ohio Open Checkbook. And although 2020 is not yet available on the website, prior year's transactions can be viewed at And you will click on the Townships button, and then the letter G to find our information. We have received the Ohio Township Association Risk Management Authority, otherwise known as OTARMA, the renewal for the upcoming policy year. The invoice is $21,688, and it's due on March 28th. The liability limit included in the premium is $3 million. Uh, we do have the opportunity, if we choose to do so, to increase the liability for an additional premium as follows. For an additional $2,400, we can go from $3 million to $4 million. For $3,629, we can increase the liability limit to $5 million. And for $4,793, we can increase to $6 million. And if you wish to increase the liability limit, you will need to do so by a resolution. And with that, I open that up to discussion.
Have we held the $3 million for a long period of time?
Certainly, the last two years. I can't go back. I, I have not gone back further than that to check, Mr. Raymert. It's possible that we changed at some point. I don't know when.
Anybody have any concerns as to why we would want to increase it?
No.
Do you see any reason why we should increase it, Mr. Easton?
Well, you know, as with everything, you never know what kind of lawsuit could eventually be filed against us, and for what dollars. Uh, $2 million is certainly better than one, uh, excuse me, $3 million is better than one or two. We've not been recommended to increase it, so I don't really have a recommendation for you. You know, the, the additional premium, up to $5,000 more for an additional $3 million, is not a huge number. But chances are, you're not gonna use that at any point in time. So, I don't know. I mean, it's truly your call. And if you aren't ready to make a decision tonight, I can certainly pay the current invoice amount. You can think about it, and we can always make the adjustment down the road, and I'm sure they prorate the premium accordingly.
I don't see a reason to adjust it at this time. I, I think we should stay with what we have.
I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think at some point in time, you gotta adjust for inflation-type things, and $3 million might not be so significant, but I feel like for now, it seems sufficient unless we have any other concerns. So, I don't have a suggestion to adjust it or recommendation to adjust it, so I'm, I'm probably staying the same as well.
Okay, we'll go with that, and should you wish to reconsider after thinking about it, we can take it up again at a future meeting. I also wanted to point out that the OTARMA renewal included an announcement that in total, they are going to be giving a $1.2 million distribution to all of their member townships. Our dividend is $1,684.03, and we should be receiving that in the next 30 to 60 days. And up until today, uh, there was scheduled visit on March 23rd from OTARMA IT Specialist Aaron Willis, not the Aaron Willis that lives here in Germantown Township. And he was coming to meet with Mr. Holbrook, Mrs. Close, Mrs. Sewell, and myself. The purpose of the visit was to assist with identifying and controlling internal IT risk and loss exposures. That meeting is gonna have to be rescheduled. There is a conflict with one of the participants here at the township for that day. And so, I will be rescheduling that meeting. But at some point, uh, Mr. Willis from OTARMA will be visiting with us. On March 15th, I am scheduled to receive the new fiscal officer laptop from the auditor state. And this is a benefit of the fees that we pay to the auditor for the UAN accounting system. Uh, every two years, we get a new computer, either a laptop or a desktop. And every two years, on the alternating year, we receive a new printer. So, in 2020, we received the printer, and, I'm sorry, 2021, we received the printer, no. In 2020, we received the printer. In 2021, we're receiving the laptop. Once everything is transferred from my current UAN laptop, the old laptop will be donated to the township by the auditor and will be available for our use wherever there is a need here at the township. In addition, when I started as fiscal officer last April, I inherited a desktop computer that was donated to the township by the Ohio Auditor when it was replaced back in 2019 with my current laptop. And this computer is also available for use by others within the township offices. So, if any employee has a need for this in their office, my current laptop or my old desktop, uh, you'll be welcome to use it once I take all of the information off my laptop. And finally, just a reminder about tomorrow night's special meeting at 6 o'clock to discuss the JED with representatives from Germantown Farmersville and Jackson Township. And with that, that's everything I have tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Easton. Uh, Chief Anzik, we'll move over to you with your report.
Hello, everyone. Uh, first off, to my knowledge, all CERT equipment and supplies have been received and forwarded to assist them in their needs. Had a meeting with Harold Holdren last week. He told me some of the things he'd like to be doing over the next year. Um, and he really wants to get proactive in the area, not only in Germantown Township, but Montgomery County. He will try to hold a CERT training over this time. Generally, this time of year, we announce when the next CERT training will be. Uh, it's kinda up in the air with the vaccinations and COVID, so that information will come out later in the year. Uh, there was a leak in my office, um, after the big snow. It has since stopped. Like to thank the Road and Service Department for stabilizing the leak. Until the roofers could get here, uh, they went above and beyond, climbing onto the roof to shovel away snow from the area of the leak to limit water flow, and got that taken care of pretty well, and I appreciate that. The police server should be installed around mid-March. The annual report is complete. Each trustee should have received a copy of it. Uh, you'll notice that the COVID slash coronavirus had a substantial effect on calls for service. But, uh, overall, I think we did a really good job last year. And that is my report.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chief Anzik. Uh, any questions for him? Alright, um, Mr. Holbrook, Road Department.
Good evening. Um, my report this evening, um, the first item is, you remember back on February 19th, and, uh, during several of the past meetings, I have discussed, uh, replacing the 2004 John Deere backhoe loader with a new 2021 John Deere backhoe loader. I think I'm ready to move on that. The backhoe will be purchased under the Ohio Department of Transportation state bid. And I apologize, there's a mistake in my report. It's not 47% off of list. It is 45.5. So, that brings the total to $91,149. Now, obviously, uh, with our trade-in, which we're gonna be listing the backhoe on GOV deals for the trade-in that Murphy Tractor has allowed, and if it goes for more than that, then we're gonna let it go and take that excess money and put it towards the purchase of the new backhoe. If it does not reach the trade-in value of $26,000, uh, we'll just trade it into Murphy Tractor and let them have it. So, I just wanna note if there was any questions, uh, on that quote that I sent out to you. And if not, if I could have the board's approval to go ahead with the purchase of that piece of equipment.
About how many hours are on your current backhoe, you know? Just approximate.
I'm not sure off the top of my head. I wanna say about $3,000 or $4,000. You can go out and look if you, if you wanna know, or I can let you know.
No, no, no. I feel like the $26,000 is gonna be a little low on what I would think GOV deals would bring you, bring you in.
Right, and that, that was kinda the reason we were gonna do it that way is, um, you know, we were all pretty, pretty pleased with what the dump truck brought, and I, we've never been disappointed with, uh, the way the biddings worked out on GOV deals with any of the equipment that we've ever sold. So, uh, I'm hoping to see, uh, quite a bit more than that. But, um, if not, we do have the fallback of just trading it into the end.
Well, you guys do such a nice job keeping your equipment cleaned and looking nice. I, that's gonna be a, I bet you're $10,000 to $15,000 low on what they're offering us, I would guess, so.
I hope so.
No, but you guys really do a nice job keeping up, keeping up with all of our equipment and making it look brand-new, even though it's, what, 16 years old, so.
Right.
Um, and that's gonna pay off hopefully with this, when we can bring in some extra money.
Right.
To offset the cost.
Yeah, I don't have any questions. I, I think you, you'd sent out a quote in December, and it's, it looks identical, I think, to the one you just sent. It's been updated in March, so we were, should be prepared for this, and I understand, so appreciate the diligence there.
Is it the same size hoe as you have now?
Yes.
When you're ready to approve this purchase, we will use Resolution 2021-15, and the amount you'll be approving is $91,149.07.
I will make Resolution 2020-15, resolution to purchase a backhoe loader from, I don't recall the, Murphy. For any amount of, Murphy Tractor, thank you, at the amount of $91,149.07.
Is there a second to the motion for the Resolution 2021-15?
I will second.
Any discussion of Resolution 2021-15?
16 years on a backhoe, and for how important it is to what Jeremy does, I think it's important for us to make sure he has proper running equipment. Not that there's anything wrong with the one you have, um, but when it, when it's used every day, like you guys do, I think it's important, especially when we're getting the 45% off list price, to replace it. So, we can bring in half, half-value on the trade-in or near it. So, I think it's important to have Jeremy with his most valuable piece of equipment up to date.
I agree. I mean, this isn't a surprise. We don't wanna be caught, you know, surprised with something. Jeremy's got this in the budget for this upcoming year, so I think it's the right move. I appreciate it, planning and budgeting for it.
Yeah, the transparency is always nice, but we know ahead of time before, and you've, even getting the 45.5% off, you know, going above and beyond and making sure that you get that, that's huge too. You know, pinching every penny really helps.
If there's no further discussion, I will call the roll. Mr. Raymert?
Yes.
Mrs. Reed?
Yes.
And Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Resolution 2021-1115 is adopted. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Um, the second item on my report is I've started work on putting together the 2021 road construction that's gonna be going on in the township. This is basically contracted, uh, work that cannot be done by, uh, the township employees. The tentative, uh, draft of work that's I'm gonna try to get done this year is, obviously, we're gonna be doing some chip seal, Pritchard Road, uh, west end of Moyer Road, Kiefer Road, and Puddin Bag Road, and we're also gonna be doing some Cape Seal, which is similar to chip seal, but then they coat it with a micromix, which is a fine slurry of an asphalt product to try to keep some of that dust down. I'm gonna be trying to do Little Forest Drive, Dry Run Circle, and Big Twin Terrace. Um, we've never done that in the past, a Cape Seal. Been talking to Jonathan down at the city of Germantown, actually went and looked at some work that, uh, he had done, and, uh, looks like it might be a good option, so, um, we're gonna try to do that on three of the roads in the township that are low-volume and low-weight. But anyways, once I get those prices and bids, I think the Cape Seal will actually be under the state contract, and the Chip Seal will probably have to go out for sealed bids. Um, but when I get that information, I will bring it to the board, um, hopefully at the next meeting. If not, it will be the first meeting in May. If you guys have any questions in the meanwhile on that, don't hesitate to reach out to me and, uh, either shoot me an email or give me a call. Couple other things on my agenda that I didn't put on there. I did start the procedure for, with Pro Long Call to install the SIP trunk phone lines and the updated phone server, not to be confused with, uh, the police department's police server. I got them. They're down payment, and they have ordered, from what I understand, they've ordered the equipment, and, uh, they will be scheduling, once all that stuff comes in, to come out and install it and start saving us some, some substantial money. Second item, as Chief Anzik stated, uh, the front portion of the police department building developed a roof leak when we had all that snow. And we called Commercial Roofing Services, who's been kind of our go-to on this, uh, rubber roof system, and they came out and did repairs on that. And the total for fixing the, uh, roof that was actually near the drain over above Chief's office was $575, which I think was reasonable for a call-out in a repair like that. Also, while he was here, I had him look at the windows in the trustees' meeting room. Several of the windows have, you, as you might know, leaked. Um, that's why the drywall, um, is starting to crumble around the one in the, uh, trustees' office and also in the fiscal officer's office. So, um, I did get a quote from, uh, Commercial Roofing to re-caulk those. Um, it does take a special kind of caulk that, um, if you go out and look at it, the caulk joint's like an inch wide, and it's a, it's a whole different process than just basic caulking. Uh, but he gave me a quote, an estimate, to dig out and remove all that existing dried and cracked caulk and replace it on, uh, I guess that would be five windows, the three on the side, that would be on the east side, and the two in the back, um, for $1,700. You don't have to make any motion on that tonight, but I think it might be something you might wanna look into. Those drywall, if you go, like I said, if you go back in the fiscal officer's office and you go back in the trustees' office, you can see the damage that it's caused around the windows. So, um, it would be my recommendation to have them do the work. But if you want time, uh, to review that estimate, I can surely send it over to you. Other than that, that's all I have in my report.
Thank you for that. And I, on, on the Pro Long Call stuff, I appreciate you moving that down the road. Uh, I talked to Shawna earlier today, I believe it was, on, uh, there was the extra televisions that, uh, Spectrum was charging us for, and she called to get that canceled, but then she said that they took away some bundle pricing and also increased the phone line a caulk that basically offset the savings we were gonna get from canceling the TV. So, uh, it, it's actually good. You're getting the SIP trunks moving pretty quickly, 'cause that'll give us some bigger savings now that they've increased the prices on the phone line. So, I appreciate you getting that moving. O, o, on the leak thing, I mean, $1,700 is not enormous, but it, it, I mean, that kinda couple hundred dollars per window is not exactly cheap. But I know we're not gonna find anybody to do it for free, obviously, so I don't know what the right answer is there. You guys think we need to get another quote, one more quote, or what do you think?
Uh, probably get another quote, but I have a question. Does the window caulk, does that include repairing the drywall?
No.
Already damaged?
No.
So, that's just straight caulk?
That's strictly just, just strictly waterproofing the exterior of the building around the windows.
Okay.
And like I said, if it, if it was just strictly, straight-up caulking, I mean, the road department would do it in-house. But, um, if you go out and look at it, it's not just the regular caulk job. It's, I, I don't know what they use, and I don't know how they apply it, but it's like an inch wide, but it's, it's very nicely done. And it's a very mastic. It's almost like a, like a, like a rubber sealant, more so than a caulking. But, um, if you look at it during the daytime, you'll understand what I'm talking about. But, um, if you'd like me to get another quote, I can surely do that.
I think it would be nice. I also appreciate you getting that ball rolling, 'cause, uh, when we've had meetings and have been in that little office, you can definitely tell, and the longer that it goes, the more visual the image you're gonna have, and then that's just, you know, the cost is going up. So, I appreciate you even getting the ball rolling, but I think another quote would be nice.
Okay.
Somebody to compare it to.
I will do that. That's all I have.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you.
Cool. Or the zoning.
Hello, um, so I do not have any old news tonight. Uh, new news, uh, I wrote the building permit for the new uh, Nest Building. Uh, on Eckhart, and so that will be starting uh, soon, if you guys wanna go check that out. Uh, we also did some solar panels on Moses in the last month. Uh, just an FYI, I do have a few possible cases coming up. I've got two nuisance abatement. Potentially and three uh, resolution violations potentially. Uh, they're, they're just in the very beginning stages, uh, so I just wanna keep you guys up to date on that. Uh, we had nearly three hundred views in the last thirty days on our website. I'm not sure if that's up or down. Uh, from our old website, because I was not titty to that information before, uh, but I thought that was, that's pretty good. About ten hits a day or so. The new emails are up and running. If you have not gotten on there yet, uh, please let me know. I can send you. Uh, the link to change your password. I did attach the email sheet that is not public uh, record. It's just a rough copy for us to have in-house. I sent that tonight. Did everybody get that? And it was pointed out that uh, Chief Anzik's name was spelled wrong on his email. I'm sorry, Chief. Uh, it is correct. On uh, your actual email, so we're good there. Uh, does anybody have any questions about the new email?
I would just say, thanks for doing it. I mean, this takes us another step forward, I feel like, along with the website. I appreciate putting the emails out on the website. Um, and as I've said before, you know, I appreciate now as we move forward, if everybody else start using this new one for me, uh, in particular, since I have a, a personal one. I will not have that forwarded onto this, so I'll have to keep track of both, but I'd appreciate if all township emails can go to this website or this address going forward. So I've logged in. It was a pretty simple process. It was a little bit confusing at first because it says it's just change password. And really you're establishing a new email, but once I click next, it it explains it all and moves through pretty easily. So I appreciate it. I think, you know, it's a big improvement for the township. It's been recommended by people in the township, so.
Definitely.
Say thank you for doing it.
Yeah, absolutely. And a couple of things I forgot to uh, list on my report, um, the police server. So Shawna did notify me, the police server will not let them use Outlook. So that means that all of the emails that they were using, they're not going to be able to access those. So we need to figure out either a way to download. The past emails, uh, for record retention at the very minimum. Um, I don't know if there's another server or another program like Outlook that they would be able to use with that server. I guess Outlook is a security issue with the new server, so. I don't really know much about that.
Correct me if I'm wrong. I thought, and I could be wrong, um, that they were keeping the old server for like a backup emergency server? Is that, am I? Do they keep them on that server? Because that server must have supported Outlook.
Yeah, that would be a chief question.
Okay.
Be still on.
Yeah, I, I believe that that's what we're gonna do, because a lot of our emails, we have to save. Um. Because of, uh, for a certain timeframe. Um, before we can delete them, so they will probably be stuck on the old server. Um, but we are looking into ways to. Um. What we're, whatever program we're gonna use will hopefully work out with the new emails and whatnot.
Okay, now Chief, um. Would you like, uh, once we officially get all of this switched over and everybody is using the new email and is comfortable with the new email? Uh, would you like if I put some type of message, like a. Uh, return message, like, you know, when you do when you're away, to let the sender know that you have a new email? Since you will not be able to. Receive those. I can forward it. But for them to change it for their documents.
Probably what we'll do with the, or the Hotmail account is we will do, we will do like a forward. And keep that on for a, a length of time, whether it be six months or a year, just to make sure that. Um, all that's getting forwarded to that new email. Um.
Right.
But as far as like my, the one that I use, I'll just contact the organizations that I'm a member of and, and change it through them. Just let them know how my email's changing, so it'll kinda do its, its uh, do it itself.
Okay. I don't want to forward the email until uh, everybody's comfortable with the new email.
Login.
So, yeah, login.
Yeah.
A couple weeks. Yeah. And then, other than that, uh, my next uh, zoning commission meeting is this Thursday at seven PM. And that is all that I have.
I just wanna piggyback off of what Mr. Raymert said. I agree with you, um, if my emails could go to the new township email address as well. So that all my township ones are, you know, all in one location and. Um, cuz I do have obviously a personal email as well, so.
Right. I can change that right now. Okay.
Anybody have any questions on the email or anything? Mr. Heeson, you, anyone?
And I can see when you log in, so I know who has logged in and who has not logged in.
I don't have a question at this point. Thank you.
Okay, I think that's, that's it for all the department heads, so we'll move over to uh, our trustee reports. Uh, I've got several items real quick. I'll try to run through several of them very, very brief. Um, one thing I'll note, um, Mr. Heeson, you might touch on this more than I will, maybe in upcoming meetings, but there's a. HR thirteen nineteen, I guess, is a proposal with the current stimulus that uh, they're looking to pass. Uh, the one point nine trillion dollar package has three hundred fifty billion dollars carved out for government funding at state and local levels, so. Uh, there could be potential more funds possibly to come in the future, uh, with less restrictions than the, the CARES Act fund, so we'll have to keep an eye on that and understand it. Um, the township email's already been covered, so nothing on that one. Um. On the uh, Parks Board, uh, Mr. Heeson mentioned and touched on it a little bit. We did meet in March. Uh, to discuss if we were going to put a levy on. Unfortunately, the last eight months since I've been on the Parks Board, we are yet to have a quorum at the meeting. And so we haven't been able to make any recommendation on that. Um. Tom Gaglin, who is the uh, the chairperson of the Parks Board, was going to reach out to several of the members that have not been attending in the past. Um, and let them know, you know, if they can't make it, and we understand, but ask them to relinquish their position, or we'll, we'll take it and appoint it to someone else that can attend. Um, we've reached out to a few people and there are some people in the queue, but um, I'm just making an announcement now. It's another opportunity for people to get involved. If uh, anybody in the community wants to get involved, obviously, even if a board position is filled, still can use community support to show up to these meetings and um. You know, carry on the good work of the community, especially on a board like the Parks Board. Uh, it's a place to get educated on, you know, this upcoming levy that may or may not be proposed or approved. Um, and understand what's going on with our parks in Germantown Township and Germantown. So just wanna announce that, um. There was another thing along those lines. Um, Haley had actually uh, placed some interest with uh, Kelly Novak at Germantown. Uh, who is, sits on the, um, well, works with the parks to organize the meetings and stuff and, and uh. She wanted uh, placed interest on the uh, Oversight Committee, which are three people. One is a township trustee, which is myself. One is a council member from Germantown, which is Terry Johnson, and then there's a third at-large seat for a, a community member. And that was open, um, due to someone resigning after several years serving there, and so Haley placed interest for that. She was voted on. Uh, last board meeting or council meeting, uh, with Germantown was passed, you know, unanimously there. And we were asked to place a vote tonight, uh, to approve Haley, um, to join as that large member for the uh, Parks Oversight Committee. Um, and like I said, interest had been uh, very weak, and so really appreciate Haley, you know, even knowing this was out there and stepping up and, and uh, applying for it, so. Give a minute if anybody had any questions or anything, and then I think we need to take a vote on that one.
That's on the Oversight Board?
Yes.
So she, Haley's gonna be on the Oversight Board. Is that not a conflict of interest? I, you're technically her supervisor here?
I, I don't know. I don't, I'm not even aware, um, if Kelly understands what position Haley holds at the township, so we can ask Kelly and wait for another meeting. Um, if that's a concern. I hadn't thought about it from that perspective. It's different. It's not like she's performing, I mean, it's something outside of, of Germantown Ship. It's, it's on the Parks Board, it's on separate, so. Uh, I'm more than happy to have that discussion if anybody has any concerns, and we can post this another one month from now, have the vote in, and I can check with Kelly. Make sure that we don't have any issues there.
So my understanding, or I guess correct me if I'm wrong, Cemetery Board, you are the Cemetery Oversight Person, correct, Jake?
Yes.
And then Lori was also a member of that?
No.
Lori was.
A fiscal officer.
A fiscal officer, but she had a vote in the board?
No, just like our fiscal officer doesn't have a vote. So I think that's, that definitely you probably need to go to Jonathan, or Nathaniel.
Okay.
Before, I mean, I'm not, I'm not comfortable with that.
No, that's for sure. That's for.
No, fiscal officer is never gonna vote on a board, so.
Okay, no, that's for your, uh, I'll send a note to email or email Nathaniel after the meeting tonight and see what his thoughts are on it. Hopefully we get a. Quick response to some of the other things we've been dealing with, right? Um, okay, so that, that's the one on the Parks Board. Uh. We will have another meeting next month on, um. You know, to make a recommendation, be able to make a recommendation. That's why there's an interim meeting that was requested with Mr. Heeson and Ashi Ali to try to understand the financials. So we can take a clear picture back to the Parks Board and hopefully have a quorum at that meeting where we can understand the financials from proposed levies and uh, and then make a recommendation. So you'll hear more about that in the future. Last topic, I, no, two, two more topics. Cemetery maintenance, um. Jeremy, you're still on here. Uh, we, I know this one's kinda floated out there for a while. I had reached out to Nathaniel on. Um, what was reasonable and what was required as far as how much you gotta get reimbursed from the general fund. Um, he did respond to that. I'm sure you've seen his response. Um, what we had talked before, I think we re-lucked it off unless anyone remembers differently, was that you were gonna gather a few quotes. And um, and we would talk about how much those were. You had already provided, you know, like an hourly rate type thing. What I checked with Nathaniel was, how much do we need to reimburse you, what's reasonable? And uh, what's required, and, and his response was, you know, we can do it based on a dollar per mo or reimburse on straight time or based on a quote. His, his exact words were, assuming it is reasonable and in good faith, um, it would be sufficient in his opinion either way, so. Um, I was just gonna see if you happened to get any more quotes collected and if we wanna carry on with that discussion, cuz it's kinda hung out here a few months.
Um, no, I still haven't got any quotes back, and I, like I said, I actually did reach out, uh, again to one of those two companies and. Um, they showed interest, but nothing ever materialized. I did get a, a copy of that email from Nathaniel and uh, I'm perfectly fine with, you know, with he said what the board felt was reasonable. And I know we had talked about at the last meeting, um, I don't remember exactly what the monetary amount was, but. Um, you know, I thought that was reasonable, so if you wanna, you know, go with that, I'm perfectly fine with that.
I, I think that seems fair to me. I mean, we'll go back to that discussion. I, I can't remember the exact dollar amount. I, it was somewhere in a, a few thousand dollars per year, and we were talking about going back a couple of years because we had this worker comp reimbursement that we could, you know, afford from the general fund to, to. Backdate it a little bit, so I'll, I'll leave it to you guys with input, and you guys have heard what Nathaniel said, and if you have any suggestions on what you think is reasonable. I know there were some concerns that we had on. Um, you know, what we could afford going forward, so.
Long, longevity wise, and I was trying to pull, if I recall, and I just have that, um, I think the quote that Jeremy turned in. Uh, yeah, with eight thousand five hundred and twenty-four dollars per year for mowing the cemeteries. Um, and so, if I remember correctly, Jeremy, please correct me if I'm wrong, that was you mow them weekly, I believe, between roughly April to October, May, October, or something in that. That range, is that pretty accurate, Mr. Holbrook?
Yes, and then we weed eat every other time.
Okay. So my understanding before was that you did it weekly to cut down on, um, I guess the wear and tear of the lawnmower? As opposed to like a bi-weekly?
Um, you cannot really mow it bi-weekly in the spring and early summer because it just, it makes a mess. It, it's like trying to mow your yard once every two weeks. You get so much thatch that it just kills the grass and it looks awful and it's hard on the equipment. Uh, but other than that, we have gotten a lot of, uh, a lot of. People, you know, that stop by and tell us how good our cemeteries look compared to, um, other. Uh, non-active cemeteries, and that's why the, the past board always felt like, you know, that was the right thing to do, is to keep our cemeteries up to, um. You know, this, to a nice look all the time, so, I mean, if the board wants me to do something else, that's totally up to you.
Well, I was just thinking, if we're talking numbers that, you know, instead of doing it, obviously our times of the year where it needs to be done weekly. Um, but, you know, there's several months where I don't know if it needs to be done weekly, so maybe. Cutting back on the times of the year where it doesn't need done weekly, that would help offset maybe some of the costs.
So I, I, I mean, you, you did provide this, Jeremy, and I do have the paper here and appreciate that, but what we talked before is we, I think we were all a little bit surprised by that, and I'm not saying it's not accurate, but. Um, you know, based on, you know, talking with Nathaniel and, and what I would suggest is. Um, we probably wouldn't pay this definitely to an outsider, um, per year. We would find some other way to offset or do something different, and so. Uh, I think what we talked before was somewhere between twenty-five hundred and five thousand a year and how, how we want to uh, do it on a going basis, so. I, I think that's what we need to do is where we find, feel is reasonable. It's a good faith, you know, they haven't been reimbursed for this for years. That's not an excuse not to, to shortchange them going forward, but. I think there's a reasonable dollar amount well below eighty-five hundred dollars that would be sufficient for the reimbursement for maintaining these five small cemeteries, so. Um.
Let's hit the quotes back.
If I remember correctly. If I remember correctly, it was, it was five thousand dollars a year and then fifteen thousand going back three years, which was like twenty thousand for the, for twenty twenty-one. And that was in line with the reimbursement we got for the workman's comp. That's how I kinda remembered it. Now I could be wrong. So it was five thousand.
I, I do remember all. Yeah, I, I think what I said, Jeremy, I, and again, we're all trying to remember a little bit, I have to go back to the minutes. I, I think I had originally said I expected somewhere in the twenty-five hundred. I, I thought five thousand would be. Sufficient because knowing that your quote came back a little bit higher, but I, again, the total hourly wage was almost forty dollars an hour, which I thought was rich for, for mowing. Um, and I understand what the basis of your uh, uh, estimate was, but I'm just saying for mowing, I thought that was a little bit more expensive than what we paid at third party, so. We talked to five thousand. I, I think that was where the concern for, for Abra going forward was just being able to, um, you know, commit to five thousand dollars a year coming from the general fund. Especially over the next handful of years where we still have the Noah Water, uh, district payments coming out and those types of things, so. I, I don't remember that there was really consensus around the five. I thought there was a lot of concern around it, but. Um, I do think, I, if you wanna wait for the quotes, we can wait for the quotes. The only thing I would say. Um, is wha- what happens if they come back and they're seventy-five hundred dollars or whatever, we're gonna be in the same situation, so let's just think through it if, if we. Uh, you know, are gonna have to do something different or what it is, because at the end of the day, I don't think the general fund can definitely withstand, you know, seven to ten thousand dollars a year, and so.
I, I totally understand that. Um, if there's any way that Abra, that if you could possibly try to find some quotes for me. Um, we're starting to get into the really busy time of the year. Um, I would greatly appreciate that if you could help the road department out by possibly, uh, you know, sending a couple of emails out, try to get some quotes on those uh, five cemeteries.
I can definitely look into it. Um, I know you is, and let me make sure I'm not pulling the places, I guess that you have already. Hold on a minute, if I took notes, and you might not have it right in front of you. Um, I thought I had written down the places that you had contacted already. And I am not seeing them written. And I am not seeing them written right in front of me. Do you recall the names of the places that you have already contacted, Mr. Holbrook?
Uh, one of them was a company called Swordfish, uh, landscaping. And let me see if I can find the other one real quick.
Uh, while, while you do that, I'm, I'm gonna offer one thing, and if you guys are not aligned, that's completely fine. But just in the interest of, uh, you know, working together and, and being reasonable and Nathaniel's good faith and reasonable offer. You know, you, you've got your hours here, um, per year. I, I feel as though, uh, you know, somewhere in the fifteen to twenty dollars per hour seems like a reasonable thing. I mean, we're talking about in today's age, moving minimum wage to fifteen dollars. I think, you know, with a little bit more than fifteen dollars an hour would be something reasonable. You've got two-hundred-and-twenty-five man-hours. I think we can do a, a general estimate of that. I think, you know, if we know how many hours it is, that's something that a, a company is going to try to estimate when they do this. And then we have to decide what we think is reasonable on a, on a dollar per hour. Um, I mean, I can do the, the simple math here.
Two-hundred-and-twenty-five times twenty dollars an hour is forty-five hundred dollars.
Okay, thirty-three seventy-five for fifteen or, or what'd you say, forty-some hundred dollars for twenty dollars an hour? So, so somewhere in that range, I, I think a happy medium is four thousand dollars. That's, you know, seventeen fifty-ish an hour. I, I feel like that's a reasonable amount to reimburse, uh, to this department. Um, but again, that's just a simple way to do this and I think it, it helps us move this matter along and put it to bed, knowing that it's all inter-fund related here for the township.
So my question about the four thousand, I'm not opposed to four thousand. That was kind of the number I had in my head. Um, my, my question about the four thousand though is, uh, Mr. Holbrook mentioned going years back. So what does that look like? Or guess what are we envisioning for paying years back? I know that, um, the lawnmower was bought out of the general fund and then, but we got the proceeds back from that lawnmower as well. So I think I recall the lawnmower was about six thousand. Um, we got back, I'm sure Mr. Holbrook's gonna be able to quote it, but I wanna say maybe twenty-five hundred, two thousand for the, um, old lawnmower or somewhere in there. So we ended up paying right about four grand for, um, the lawnmower, but I know that's part of it. So I just was curious, what is it we're thinking? How many years back are we gonna go for this? I guess that's really a kind of a poor question. If we say four thousand per year, are we gonna go back two years? Are we gonna go back five years? What are we thinking? Do we just wanna go from here forward or?
I don't have a really strong opinion. I understand the, Mr. Uh, Holbrook had asked us about transferring some of that workers' comp money into his, his account. Because, you know, the, the Police Department had gotten Cares Funds and stuff. And, um, we had just talked around a few of those things. We thought one of the ways to justify, you know, transferring some of those workers' comp into his budget, which is already extremely tight, is justified by not having paid his department for several years for this. I think it's reasonable to go back a few years. How many? I don't have a strong opinion on that, so.
How about a ten thousand dollar?
One time.
Back, one-time back payment, four thousand a year going forward.
Do we want to make it an even four? You know what I mean? Like by fours? So that it looks, or does it make a difference?
I don't think it makes a difference, but I, I think we should probably also leave it that we can change it year to year based on budget. So it's not just, so we're gonna approve four thousand dollars for this year's mowing season. I think that's something that needs to be done at the beginning of the year. Just think, I mean, I, we don't know what's gonna happen going forward, so.
I think Mr. Houston said that if we did this, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Houston, that that would be something at our budget meeting that we could change, alter, discuss. Is that correct, Mr. Houston?
You can make that change. And there was some discussion earlier that someone asked how much the last dividend was from the Bureau of Workers' Comp. And that's the dividend that went at this point into the general fund. And that dividend was twenty-seven thousand five hundred sixty-five dollars. So that's the money that we are, you know, everything went into the general fund because the auditor said we could do that. But you can move that anywhere you want, including using it for this purpose.
Just so we know, I think we're gonna time out in five minutes. So is there anything we can touch on that to make sure we keep going?
We can pick up and read out and I don't know.
Yeah, okay. So Mr. Stubbs, can I ask you just a quick question? So ten, and I think it was Mr. Stubbs that says ten thousand for pass and then four thousand, so a total of fourteen thousand. Is that correct? Well, I mean, ten thousand and then that does not include the four thousand for twenty-two-one. Okay, I just wanted to get my head around it. Okay.
I, I think that's reasonable. If you don't object, Jeremy, I think what that does, I mean, obviously you might have wished for more going back, but I think that gives us a little bit of flexibility to go in the next year. You know, we, we hopefully will be more comfortable with being able to do this on a going basis as well. So, um, you have any comments there?
No, it's the Board's decision. So, I mean, if that's the decision you wanna make, that's fine.
If you're ready to make a decision, we'll do that by resolution and that would be twenty-twenty-one dash sixteen.
I'll, I'll make resolution twenty-twenty-one dash sixteen to pay, uh, ten thousand dollars in arrears for past services that the Road Department has performed for cutting the grass at, at the cemeteries. And then on a going basis, and I don't know if you need to do it separately, hopefully we can do it all as one resolution, on a going basis, do four thousand dollars, uh, for twenty-twenty-one, uh, services for the cemetery. And, and just for documentation, I would put that's roughly seventeen fifty an hour for two-hundred-and-twenty-five hours of estimated services. It's a good faith estimate that we're working on.
Is there a second to resolution twenty-twenty-one dash sixteen?
I have a second.
You, okay. Thank you, Mrs. Reed. Any discussion of twenty-twenty-one dash sixteen?
Can I, uh, for the public, uh, interject here, Mr. Houston?
I don't see any reason why you can't, Mr. Keener.
Thank you. Mark Keener, seventy-eight sixty-five Jamaica Road. Uh, first off, somebody, when you guys were talking about the Park Board, somebody put up something up in the chat, um, wanting to know, uh, when or if the, um, Park Oversight Board position was advertised. Since advertising these positions seems to be the new, uh, norm for this Board. Uh, secondly, with regards to the mowing here, with all due respect, Tyler, I'm not sure where you're coming up with seventeen fifty is a fair value for mowing grass. I mean, maybe for the neighborhood kid. Um, but, I mean, with somebody that would have a business, uh, mowing grass, they're gonna be quoting a lot more than, than fifteen or seventeen dollars an hour. If they're paying their people twelve or thirteen dollars an hour, I mean, you were in public accounting, you know, there's a multiplier typically you do on somebody's rates. And so, you know, you're, you're probably looking at a mowing, a commercial mowing service quoting anywhere from, you know, if they're paying somebody twelve bucks an hour, they're, they're quoting easily twenty-five to thirty dollars an hour for the labor portion. So I, I think seventeen fifty an hour is really kind of a slap in the face and, uh, really is about half of what their actual wage cost is in the Road Department. So, um, and if you pass this resolution tonight, does this mean that, uh, you're no longer going to be looking for, uh, outside bids? Or is this just basically gonna be it? So that's all.
Yeah, thanks, thanks for the comments. I would say a couple of things. One is, uh, you know, we're providing the equipment, uh, so this would just be for labor. And yes, it is a bonded job, so obviously the, the cost may be a little bit higher. But, uh, I, I don't think neighborhood kids are making seventeen fifty an hour to, to mow grass. But, um, we can differ there and we can wait if we've already got a couple of quote requests out there that haven't been responded to over the last two months. If they happen to be hungry enough to actually respond, then we'll know more better what the actual market is. The other question I would have back to you, Mr. Keener, is this went on for the last twenty years in this manner? And we're trying to, uh, remu, remu, repay his, uh, funds going, on a going basis, which is much better than what's been done in the past. So, um, I think it's a, a giant leap forward from what had been done in the past when you were part of this, uh, this, uh, operation.
Uh, the point well taken, and I do applaud the Board for trying to do something about it at this point in time. So, um, yeah, and neighborhood kids can be making, I mean, thirty-five years ago, when I was cutting grass for living, when I was, was in college, I was, I was bidding it out at fifteen bucks an hour then. So, uh, just as a point of reference, so.
Yeah, but that's using your own equipment, correct?
Uh, that was with my own equipment, yes, but also figuring in a labor cost, so.
Absolutely, but you're, you have maintenance and equipment and other things to buy. Regardless, we don't need to banter about this. I think if, if quotes come in and we've asked Jeremy if he finds it a other way sufficient, uh, I think it's, like I said, a step forward. I think it's, it's reasonable. It's within the department and we will be giving him funds, uh, that had not been given to him over the last twenty years. So I think it's a step forward that, that makes sense. And I, ultimately, uh, if it costs more than that, I think we would have a, a hard time trying to decide if there was something else we were going to do. Because there's only so much the general fund can, can front anyways. So, um, unfortunately, if that, if that's not reasonable, then we would probably have to make other, uh, uh, situations or solutions for the problem. Because I don't think we can afford it as all three of the trustees stated.
I, I would agree that the, yeah, we gotta watch what goes out of the general fund, but, uh.
I, I appreciate the comments. I, I understand where you're coming from. So with that being said, and anyone else have any other comments on that issue?
Just moving forward, moving forward too, we can readjust in twenty-twenty-two. So if this doesn't work out, uh, I know we're about half of what he asked for, but if for some reason this drastically isn't working out, I, we will set, uh, eight months from now, we can readjust it, so.
You can readjust it at any time that you might wanna make a change. Any further comments? If not, I will call the question, but I'll give you a chance for comments. All right, hearing done. Mr. Raymard?
Yes.
Mrs. Reed?
Yes.
And Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution twenty-one dash, twenty-twenty-one dash sixteen is adopted.
Okay, last quote, or last one for me is, uh, the JED meeting. So we met on the JED probably three days after our last regular trustee meeting. Uh, Mr. Stubbs and Mrs. Reed were not a part of that meeting, so it was not a regular officially scheduled meeting. But, uh, we did have it on WebEx, so everyone could attend and it was hopefully transparent to the public. It was announced in advance. Uh, just to give, um, Mr. Stubbs and Mrs. Reed an, an update on that meeting along with what's to come, we have another meeting as Mr. Houston mentioned. Tomorrow evening at six P M. It has been announced well in advance and hopefully anyone that would like to attend and obviously Mr. Cross, if you wanna look and make any comments there. Uh, with that JED meeting, there has been a lot of progress made. There's still a few hills to let yet to climb. Um, uh, Dinsmore Shoal, who's the lawyer for the JED, uh, has drafted a contract. We went through that meeting, through that contract last meeting, made several, uh, grammatical and other type changes to the, uh, to the contract. There were a few, um, that I would call significant as far as, there were some split changes between, uh, Jackson Township and Farmersville as to how much they wanted to, uh, split in their revenues from the income taxes. Uh, that was the most significant thing, most everything else was, was very minor in the changes. The two things that we focused on, Mr. Houston, obviously you can join in with any commentary as you were there for that meeting. Uh, the two things that held us up most of the evening was, uh, you know, as we looked through, uh, the JED contract, it very clearly calls out what your contribution will be as the townships or municipalities to the JED and the Economic Development District. In addition to the con, in addition to the contribution, there's also, uh, discussion on what will be the Economic Development Plan on a going basis, basis for the district. And those are the two places I think that we need the most input to make sure that we feel like it is, uh, reasonable, that we are contributing the right things for the district on a going basis. And, uh, calling them out appropriately in the contract as seen fit. So, um, what I would say is the draft contract that, uh, we reviewed last month along with all the changes was sent to the trustees today. Um, so you guys will have that and going into tomorrow's meeting, you'll see the red lines and any changes we made in last meeting. So you can, uh, see what any changes and things we discussed last meeting. Um, we will go through that contract tomorrow along with the Economic Development Plan. That was sent out after last JED meeting, um, from, I think, Mr. Walsig. Uh, he and Germantown worked with Dinsmore Shoal to write up that draft Economic Development Plan for the JED District. So, uh, everyone will be fresh going into tomorrow's meeting on that one because that was not discussed at any meetings. So we need to look through it. I would ask that both you guys pay special attention to it because that's, that's one thing that I'm most concerned about is how that thing reads and what we plan to contribute, what it's committing us to and what should we be committing to as we go on forward. Uh, so please read through it. Um, yeah, I made a few notes. Let me make sure I've got everything covered. Uh, oh, there was one other, uh, JED that we identified in the state of Ohio around specifically a school district. I believe it was up around Cleveland, it was named Burton, the village of, village of Burton. And, uh, I made a public records request for that JED contract and I've, I've sent that to you guys as well. Uh, so you do have a contract that's already established and was signed into, uh, uh, there was a resolution passed this year to establish that JED. So that's a very recent one for the very same, uh, situation that we have. So I would just suggest maybe comparing that contract to the draft that we had. Um, so hopefully that gets you guys up to speed on what we discussed at the last meeting. Um, the only other thing mentioned, and I, I haven't confirmed this, is that we will not break ground in twenty-twenty-one as potentially planned by the school board. It looks like twenty-twenty-two is now the earliest and I think there's been some discussions on how much money the school is actually getting from the state and several other things. So there may be a little bit of delay on that, so. Have any questions on the JED? No?
No, I like the, I like the copy where it's crossed out so that I can see what, you know, has been changed and things.
And I'm happy, obviously, to have this discussion more. I, I did think that I wanted to at least pause here for a minute in case there was any questions that we as the trustees should be asking. Because, um, you know, going into tomorrow, you know, just if we want to, uh, discuss what our position is in general or anything like that, if you just wanna handle it tomorrow, I'm happy for that too. But I'm happy to answer any questions you guys have without the other, uh, municipalities.
I put a star by this, um, and maybe you guys discussed it. It just says that Germantownship will be the ones to hold all of the records and documents. Um, I would assume that would fall under the fiscal officers, you know, at all.
Yeah, there was some talk about that, whether it be Germantown or Germantownship. It was thought that because the JED is residing in Germantownship, it should be at Germantownship because there's not a fiscal office for the JED. And, uh, the question was, you know, where should they store fiscal documents? But it wasn't decided who, how, you know, within Germantownship, so it would be something that needs to iron down.
I should know if Mr. Houston was aware that you might have to be the person, the person to do that. That was really the only thing that I starred, you know, next to the changes that have been made.
The, the JED itself, the JED Board will be the ones responsible for the records, whether they're kept here or not. Uh, that's can be determined, uh, but there is no responsibility for me as fiscal officer to keep the records of another political jurisdiction.
So we would just have to have like an area, if you will, or filing cabinet with their things in it?
I would assume that's what would happen. You know, they, they will be audited no different than what the township is or the city or the cemetery. Uh, they, they are a political jur, jurisdiction and, uh, trustees, um, will have, have to have an audit by the state every two years.
All right, thank you.
Okay, that's all I have. Mrs. Reed, on to you.
Um, well, actually, Mr. Dr. Cross, sorry, um, commented on what I was gonna comment on about the, uh, Senior Center Board. Nothing has changed since the last meeting since I did, uh, comment on that, because we don't meet again until April. So, uh, we have not met for Senior Center and we have not met for the Fire Board either. I will say that I frequently see the, uh, equipment that the Police Department donated or the, I'm sorry, they donated the money from the Cares Fund for the CERT equipment. And I frequently see that being used and like it is much appreciated, so I appreciate that, um, being, money being donated to them out of that account. And I think that they appreciate it as well, it appears, so. That's all.
Good. Mr. Stubbs?
Uh, just a couple of things. Was there a follow-up on that question though?
Yeah, there was actually two. I think Mr. Uh, Cross had asked in another one, so I was gonna wait till the end.
Okay, all right, that's fine, that's fine.
Anything else came up?
Uh, cemetery that we've, uh, got a transmission leak on a couple of the lawnmowers is a warranty tip we're working on getting. Apparently it's a widespread issue, so we're just looking into that. Um, not much else going on at the cemetery right now. The, uh, Pool Board did not meet. It was canceled this month. Uh, we do still have two vacancies for the Pool Board. We do still have two vacancies for the pool board, so if anybody's interested in the pool board, let someone here, myself, or someone to the city know. The last thing I had was the cell tower. I'm sure you guys have seen some of the back and forth emails. I'm not sure why it's, I think we're having a miscommunication on. Yes, the cell tower is being used by Marx. That's a fact. We all know that. If we can have someone else on the tower, and I thought I clearly stated that question. I'm not sure why we're five months in and not getting a proper answer, but last I saw, we're still waiting on him, on the attorney to get back with us, so. But hopefully we can move forward with that if this company is even still interested at this point, but that would definitely bring some revenue into the township if it is allowed. So hopefully the contract on that can be gone through by the prosecutor's office and we can move forward. That's all I have on that.
The prosecutor's, I'm sorry, the prosecutor's office still has not gotten back?
I emailed all, I looked all of us. It didn't answer the original question. So that's all I have tonight.
Okay. There were two questions up there. I think, Mr. Cross, I'm guessing the first one on the other township's doing. I think I saw that earlier, probably in relation to the three million dollar liability insurance. Is that correct for Otarna?
Yeah, correct. Yeah, I just wondered if, you know, similar townships like Perry and Jackson, what their limits are. Question about that.
Yeah, I think it's a fair question. Mr. Houston, I don't know if that's something that we can ask, or you want us to ask, me to ask. I mean, we can reach out and ask that question. I think it's fair. I mean, at any given point, I assume we can go back and up the insurance. Maybe we can only at the one-year mark. So maybe we need to do that before we respond.
Sorry. Yes, I can reach out to Perry. I'm sorry, Mark. Tell me again the townships I was doing.
Like Jackson Township and Perry Township, Mark, something similar to, you know, our rural townships there.
Okay, okay. I will get that answer for the trustees, and we can discuss it at the next meeting. We can make that change at any time if we wish to do so.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
And then the last question, Mark, if you want to add any context, feel free, but as far as was the parks advertised? We haven't advertised, and I'm aware of, from Germantown perspective, so this was in February. We did not meet on the parks. I'm trying to think. I think we may have met in January, but regardless, the meeting or the position was not advertised from Germantown perspective. Now, I put Haley on the spot. Germantown perspective, I should say. From Germantown, maybe Haley can help me out because I didn't contact Haley or let her know about that position, so I would have been the one from the park board letting anyone know from a Germantown perspective. So I assume Germantown had put something out there somewhere, or Haley had seen it from that. But you're right. As far as these things being advertised, that's what we actually talked a little bit, even though we didn't have a quorum, we were talking about, you know, moving forward, we're going to need to do something a little bit different for the parks. And I just informally had put something on the VB Spartan page that there's some open positions coming up in different places just to let people know because ultimately I don't feel like the community is well aware of all the positions that are out there. I mean, you're going to have some school board, you're going to have some trustee position. All three of our trustee positions this fall will come open. So I had just put out there on the VB Spartan page here recently, something about the parks board, the trustee position, the school board position, just other ways in the community to get involved. I think it is important for the community to understand whenever something comes open, and I would definitely feel like posting this would be okay. Now, with that being said, Germantown, I would definitely be working with them on something like that because obviously it's a joint park, so it's not just our call here at the township as to what we do as far as posting those positions.
I will say, Dr. Cross, on the water bill, I don't know if this specific position was posted, but we just got our city water bill today, and on the back of it, I haven't opened this today, but the back of it typically will say if there are openings in the different boards, so at least if you live within the city limits, a lot of times they're advertised there. I guess I don't know about this specific position, but I believe the city does put the open positions on the back of the water bill. I've seen them before.
I'm on the Germantown website right now, and still available are Board of Tax Appeals, Personnel Board, and Pool Board advertised on their website. I would assume that the park board is no longer on there because last week they
They voted to.
voted for myself.
Yeah, so I'll get back with Nathaniel on that position and see if it's something we can give or not to approve Haley. As far as advertising these positions, what I'll say is that, yes, on the zoning for sure on both of those, the intent is, because those two are under my purview, is to make sure that there's an opportunity for people to be aware of those positions before they get filled. I think it's a good practice. I think there's people out there that want to participate but don't know where to start and are intimidated by the process in general, which is why I posted, you know, on Facebook, different things like that at different times, you know, encouraging people to participate because I think it's important. So if you have any follow-up questions, I'm happy to answer that either here or an email later, however you like.
No, thank you. I think that if, you know, you need to probably follow the same procedure with all openings, whether, you know, parks board or certainly zoning, but it makes it, I think, easier to get those positions filled, plus it's more fair to open that, let the community know, but, you know, that's just my opinion on that, so good. Okay, thank you.
No, and that's fair. Like I said, the only caveat to that, I would say, is just that it's a joint park thing, so just making sure that if Germantown has a process in place, that I, being new to that, would follow what they have, you know? So, but no, we take in, agreed, and I have nothing further. Is there any other comments?
I think that's your Cleveland's question.
Okay. Mr. Cleveland?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir. Can you state your name and address, please?
Thank you very much. Lynn Cleveland, one-one-eight-five-eight Oxford Road. First, I would like to thank Chief Adjsic for everything you did for the CERT department. The equipment we got is helping us immensely. Next thing, I would like to add to Jeremy's content about your building. Your envelope, the ceiling around your windows, twenty- to thirty-year life paint, and it needs to be redone. This is not something you can buy at Lowe's or Home Depot. It is especially problematic. So what Jeremy is proposing is absolutely correct. That's the end of what I've got.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other comments? Okay. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second to the motion?
Yes, I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Any, all in favor of the motion to adjourn?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned at eight-eighteen. Thank you very much. Good night, everybody.